Welcome. I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, March 12th, 2024 school board meeting, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will now set a timer for 30 minutes should anyone come in with public input. That's the time we allot. However, if somebody comes in outside of that time, we'll probably allow them to speak as well. Third on the agenda is the PTO update. It's off. Test.
Yeah. So I'm going to speak on behalf of the PTO. And first thing, they're going to be digitalizing their popular teacher raffles this year. So they're working on the details, and that will be happening sometime this spring. A list of open positions will be sent home with the students next week so that families will be aware if they want to jump on board and participate in the PTO. Next month's PTO meeting will feature elections, and that's going to be held April 2nd at 6:30. And also, a couple of upcoming events where the PTO will be present will be at Main Street Schools Kindergarten Information Night on Tuesday, March 28th. And then we're having a solar eclipse viewing on April 8th in the afternoon on our playgrounds/fields. More details to come following this week's STEAM night. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, then next on the agenda is the SAU 16 administrative update, financials.
Hi, Molly.
Hello. So somewhere up there, oh, the manifest right there. So if you guys can sign those, that would be great. So since the last meeting, we actually had a reduction of expenses. So we had some encumbrance changes for people that were on FMLA or moving to different departments who are resigned. And then we also had some on the flip side in special encumbrance increases for some new aides. Building administration had some supplies and encumbrance changes, especially for one person's profile in the system. I say this every year, as soon as I reduce that snow plowing encumbrance, we're going to get a major storm, but I, a knock on wood, because I took it down quite a bit. And then because we haven't been running the buses in the full fleet, we reduced the encumbrance for the buses. Did anybody have any questions? So that's pretty much everything. We did add a little bit of revenue in the bottom right-hand corner, especially on other local revenue. So Gordon Graham, our attorney, has always advised us to put impact fees as other local revenue on anticipated. That way, in the event, you could hold the public hearing and expend them if you wanted to. Because if you put it on the 24 as planned revenue, then you cannot hold the public hearing because it's planned. So that's kind of why your other local revenue is higher than it typically is.
Where is that?
The bottom corner.
Oh, the left corner, okay.
And you don't see that in the cooperative because we have to plan for it because of the different tax rates that go into it. But for the elementaries, that was his advice. So I will grab the manifest when you're done signing, but.
Yeah, I have a few.
Yeah, maybe. I wonder where my agenda just went.
Okay, thank you, Molly. Appreciate it. And now we move on to the nomination list.
Right, I just put that on there. I put the nomination list on there just as a reminder that next month you'll be getting nomination list, which is the certified staff that we will be renewing. And so you'll see that, but I didn't want you to see your packet and not know what that was. We usually put numbers next to everyone, so if we did want to talk about someone specific, we would recommend that we go in non-public to do that. But I just kind of have a heads up to the board. Also, we just got all the grant assurances. You'll see those in next month's packet. That's for the board chair to sign off on. That's basically everything we say we will do to adhere to all the grant rules around how we spend it, what activities are allowed, et cetera. So you'll also see that next month. This month, we really have been concentrating on, we had a big professional day, development day today, and across the SAU, I just publicly want to thank Jill Lysier, who happens to be also an Exeter parent and resident, did a wonderful job recruiting. We had about 63 staff that presented to other staff this morning. And so we're getting great feedback on our exit ticket, that the sessions that people chose, there was some choice for folks. They really got a lot out of it. And then I'm sure they'll speak to the professional development that happened later this afternoon in the buildings. So that was a big day for us with a lot of planning, as well as today is the voting day. If you have not voted, then please do that if you choose to vote. So it's important, and just want to reiterate that. We're hoping we get a high turnout for our voting. As always, we continue to work on trying to make sure that our budgets are in line right now as we expend and as we develop the new ones. So whether they pass or not, we'll start to think about that. We'll know tomorrow morning. And I think right now, we're working hard. We're having a short retreat with our principals for tomorrow around common and flexible for SAU 16, meaning we're really trying to identify what's tight and common in all of our schools across SAU 16, and then what's flexible in a variety of areas such as safety and security, curriculum, human resources, discipline, et cetera, trying to really make an organization that functions as a full system, which has always been a challenge since I've been here in SAU 16 because our communities are very different. So our principals have asked for us to work through that. I'm sure it'll be a lengthy and robust conversation tomorrow and Thursday afternoon. But I anticipate we'll have a better understanding of what's common, what's flexible, and how we operate as an organization, and how important it is that we are a system altogether. And there is some flexibility, but there it's important to have also that coalition to really drive change as we head into that vision summit on March 26th. It's another ad. If you don't have anything to do, or even if you do, this is highly important, on March 26th, 5 to 7, there is childcare available, and you can RSVP, please. It's on the webpage. It's everywhere. If for some reason you don't have it, please email me, and I'll get that to you before Friday. We do have an RSVP for the food and childcare. That's why we have it. Of course, if someone shows up that night, we are not going to turn and run away. But if you do need childcare, that's the biggest reason, so we can meet age-appropriate needs of the kids. So we hope to get a decent turnout on that. I think we had somewhere, we brought 50 people so far. I announced it today in front of all the staff. I'm hoping that'll kick out, kick up some more staff participation as that vision will then drive the strategic planning next year, next fall, when we start that. So those things are all in the hopper, as we say, and percolating, as my grandmother would say. That's an old term for coffee. And we'll keep, we'll keep trying to meet people's needs. We're excited about the work and what's happened, and we're also excited about moving forward. So that's it from the SAU. Any questions?
I have a quick question. It may come up later in the communications committee report, but just since you're mentioning this idea of sort of developing a coalition and sort of a shared vision, I'm just curious if you could give an update on.
I can.
High level, where we're at with the survey and how you plan to kind of use that.
Sure. As you well know, the communication survey, there was actually two, one for the cooperative and then one for the entire SAU. The cooperative one will be presented to the cooperative board in two weeks, and then that'll go up on the web and be pushed out. So if you have an interest in that, you can access that after whatever the next, the third Tuesday, that Wednesday morning, it's ready to go. We did the, we got a nice executive summary, has commendations and recommendations, and we've got that up front for the report, and then the full report will be accessible for anyone that wants to go in depth. The same holds true for the SAU 16 communication survey that got wrapped up. We met with the communications committee. Again, we're going to present that first to the joint board in April 19th, 15th, whatever that Monday is that week. And then that'll go up for everyone on all the webpages to access. Same, similar presentation with an executive summary, commendations, recommendations, and then access the full report for those that want to do that. I can tell you, overall, general themes are communication. The frequency is pretty good. People are pretty happy with that, the amount. I think the number one people access communication, at least in the SAU 16, came out emails, and I'm looking to Heather to make sure I remember that right. And, you know, there's always room for growth in some of those areas around the webpage, which we expected. We've been working on that. So those of you that accessed it lately, there have been some improvements, but still a work in progress for sure. And then too much information, too little information, it's, those are kind of all over the place. So we'll take that, and that'll help drive, I imagine, that communications section for the strategic planning. So we'll have some really great data and recent data on that. But everybody should have access to all of that by the middle of April to the co-op one this month, the full SAU 16 one next month, after they go to the boards.
I'll just make a comment that since I, my children started in SAU 16, the communications has improved greatly, but since you started, it's improved like twofold, like amazing. I think it's all, at least the administrators that are running the schools that my children are in, I've been very happy with the amount of communication and the way it's done.
Thanks. That's great feedback. Appreciate it.
Okay, approval of meeting minutes from February 6, 2024. I think we were all here. Oh, that was a, that was a speedy meeting. I didn't, I do not have any changes. Does anyone?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All second. I need discussion? All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes from February 6, 2024, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Tanya, Principal, Main Street School, update. Oh, you're going to do your presentation?
I think, yeah, I think we're going to do our data, but then Esther mentioned some of our professional developments, so I could talk a little bit about what we did this afternoon. Beth and I, actually, we co-ran two sessions this morning that was on Portrait of an Educator and giving peer-to-peer feedback, because that's one of the options they can pick. So we had some people come to that. So I don't know exactly how the other sessions went, but when we came back to our school, we were talking to our staff, people had really good responses for the sessions that were offered this morning. We're hoping that they'd be offered again. So I think today was really successful. When we came back to our school, Andreas came. He talked a little bit about Policy AC and then our work on developing a protocol for discrimination and how we've worked through that. And Abby and I contributed quite a bit on the ADTF, on developing that protocol, and we've been able to use it and work out some kinks. So he was just explaining it to the staff that that's how we're meeting the policy requirement. And then we ran an afternoon doing some scenarios, talking about implicit bias with families of low socioeconomic status. And so then we worked through some scenarios and with real-life examples that we found, and some that hit a little close to home of situations that I've been in, and then our staff talked about that, and talking about intent versus impact and how that could land on families when we're trying to be helpful in the perception of that, and also us holding some of our families up to our middle-class norms and expectations and what we can do to work with families and with students to understand that everybody is welcome here and different values and beliefs that people hold. And so it was some good conversations. We're going to do a part two of, so that's what we did at our school. And then we're going to do data, and then Ryan can do his part. Okay, if you guys want to come and swoop around so you can see it. Go up there, click slideshow. Yeah, sure. Okay, so it's in the exact same format it was at the beginning of the year, so you could kind of do a side-by-side comparison. But this is looking at our mid-year data that was completed the end of January. So just to review, when we're talking about some of these scores, the information that you're going to see, the results are based on end-of-year skills. So everything that you see, if it shows like, oh, man, you know, some of our students are still in the yellow or the red, some of that might be actually where they should be for expected growth at this time of the year until we look at our end-of-year data. So just keep that in mind that we're talking end of year. And if you look at this, this is our, when we talk about multi-tiered systems of support, this is one of the tiers, just talking about academics. And in tier one, you're talking about core instruction that 100% of students get access to. So we really work with all of our related services, special education, to make sure that students do not get polled during core tier one. 100% of students get that. And then research says that if you have good quality tier-one instruction, that about 80 to 90% of students will find success with that first high-quality drop of information. And then you're going to move into tier two of 5 to 15% of students who might need some type of intervention and who might be performing at a year to two years or so of having maybe a skill deficit, and then we'd be working at targeted interventions there. And then beyond that, you have students that are in tier three that might need more significant one-on-one intervention who are at two or plus years behind where we would expect them to be at core. A student who is at tier three should also be receiving tier one, tier two, and tier three, so you're talking about multiple exposures so that they have many opportunities of learning core content. So when we're looking at our whole school reading data, we do not assess kindergarten in reading. We assess first and second grade. And so you can see our beginning-of-the-year data, which was good. We were happy with our beginning-of-year data because, again, these are end-of-year skills and requirements. But you can see the growth that has already been made by mid-year on this one assessment. There's lots of data points, but on this one assessment. Usually for a school, what we like to celebrate is, I mean, we're really focused on like the yellow group who are approaching and how do we push them into the green? And, I mean, obviously, the moving from 6% that may have been a concern to now being at 2% is really good, and you can see like what the actual number of students would be. We don't have any students that are in the at-risk for what IREDDI determines to be at risk right now. And then we also grew students who were already coming in strong, and that's also a really good indicator that we're meeting their needs as well. And then this is reading by grade levels. So here you have first grade and second grade. We met with Jill Lysier. We were talking about, there's a feature in IREDDI that I hadn't utilized before where you can look at national norms. And so we went through, and she said, really, 25th percentile is a good cut for looking at students who might be potentially at risk. And so we thought, well, our students are doing pretty well. Like, what if we set it at a 30% and see who comes up on a nationally normed as being at risk? And at this point in the year, we already have about 90% of our first graders are already above that classification, and 80% of our second graders are above that classification. And that is, again, is based on end-of-year. So we feel like we're in a pretty good place right now compared to our peers nationally. And then looking at whole school math, which does include kindergarten, if you can see, it's very similar to reading. We were able to move kids out of the yellow and red, and we were also still able to grow our students who came in strong. And then here's math by grade. Give you a second to look at those. And using that same kind of cut score for nationally normed percentiles, about 92% of our kindergartners were above that at-risk classification. Again, about 87% of first graders and 80% of our second graders. So we're feeling good. Still have work to do, but we're feeling pretty good where we are mid-year.
I have a question, but it's like a global comment, just since I was reading. This is great to see. It's really incredible. I was curious, because we had been talking for so many, well, not so many years, since I've been on the board, since the pandemic of like, this year almost being like, okay, these kids are.
Like, they started with us, our kindergartners.
They started with you, right?
Right.
So I'm curious, I don't know if it's from this point forward, or look, it's kind of hard to look back, but just from like a year-to-year comparison, like how do we, it's a little strange to do that now because you're comparing to pandemic years.
Yeah.
But it would be really interesting going forward, perhaps, to look at a year-to-year
We do. We have, some of our, like Carla's are kind of like data collection guru, but she does have some spreadsheets where we're trying to look like vertically to follow those students and also to do grade-by-grade comparisons. So like, for instance, our second grade population, just, they have a variety of needs, and so they look different than some of our other kids because that makeup of those kids are just different. So it's going to be helpful to look at like how is second grade done historically, but also like how is this group of kids growing year-to-year? Because that can look different when you're looking like apples to apples. The other thing is, IREDDI is a fairly new assessment tool. And so since this is kind of like our first really typical year of having all of those kids, it's kind of like starting, you know, last year, this year, to start tracking some of that is probably going to be more reliable than going before, because we didn't always have the same data.
Do you find that for the kids that were either from the beginning of the year or now at this point at mid to above grade level, because there were some kids that were already at that point, beginning of the year, that their, their needs are being met too?
I think so. I mean, that's why I feel like what is evidenced by is like some of that really green or that striped green, those are the kids that were already coming in at or above, and that's grown quite a bit. But we do have lots of conversations of like, what do we keep doing for these students? And so when we're talking about multi-tiered systems of support, I know that we showed you like the intervention triangle, but making sure that your high kids continue to grow is also part of that equation. And so we do talk about it through our collaborative teams and talking about what types of extension opportunities are we offering these students to make sure that they're staying interested and engaged in their lessons too. That's actually, that is a more tricky part than running academic intervention is that conversation, and so, you know, it's developing those systems.
Well, it's really great. I mean, I just want to say, from watching it over the past few years, like such incredible progress, and it's really, there's more, seem to be more kids getting into that green or the stripe earlier now in the year. So it does sort of raise that question of.
What are we going to do with them?
Yeah, what do you do? Right? Like, they're there, right?
Yeah.
So I know you guys talk about this, but I was curious.
It is. We both run, Ryan and I both have like a strong professional learning communities background. It's PLCs is what they're called. And so there's like, all learning is kind of broken down into these four questions according to the system, which is, what do you want kids to know? How do you know that they know it? What do you do when they don't learn it? And what do you do when they do? And so when we meet with our collaborative teams, that's one of the questions. So you can't really avoid talking about that. We do an assessment, and then we're like, well, these kids have it, these kids don't. What are we going to do with both pots of these kids? So it's a regular part of our conversations using that system. And then these are just some other assessments. So I think it's important to know, like, this is one tool. There's, it's looking really good. These are some of our other assessments that we use that we triangulate our data with, and Carla's going to speak to that here in a little bit. But we, there's, there's a lot of tools that we're using to track and progress monitor students and make sure that we are not missing anything. All right, I'm going to switch with Ryan. I think so.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. For Lincoln Street School, it's going to be a very similar, couple of slides looking over our mid-year reading and math data. And then again, as Tanya alluded to, we also have some representatives from our buildings who are going to speak a little bit more in-depth about, okay, so whether we're looking at these bars or we're digging a little bit deeper into IREDDI, and we're looking at the student data, what does that process look like? And what do those conversations look like as far as how they then impact students and impact instruction and groupings, et cetera? So I, we felt like we've all looked at the bars before, and we can certainly talk about how they're trending in the right direction, certainly seem to be. But then what does that look like in the school day, in our PLC model or collaborative team times when teachers are meeting as grade levels and really unpacking this data? So looking, again, fairly quickly at our reading data from mid-year, you can see some really nice growth. I want to just highlight in particular, you know, if you look at the beginning of the year, we had around 19% that were in those two red categories, and we've dropped that down to about 8%, which is really phenomenal growth for, you know, those students receiving those tier-two and tier-three services. In addition, we have some really nice growth, particularly over on the far green, the, with the, I guess we'll just call it the darker green, jumping up to 44%. So really making some nice, nice growth there. And if we go to the next slide, we can kind of see that breakdown at each grade level. And as Tanya had mentioned, we want to use kind of a similar data point with some of the reports that we can run within IREDDI. So for third, fourth, and fifth grade students, looking at students who had a cut score of about 30% and below, for all students, including all of our, you know, sub-populations, we had almost pretty similar numbers, 85, 85, and almost 89% of our third, fourth, and fifth graders above that at-risk classification. So we're very happy with where the reading is going, and, you know, certainly, I think, as we get into the spring, we'll talk a little bit more about where our reading program is going, but we're not quite ready for that conversation right now. But we're very happy with the growth that students are making, again, at tier one, but also with those tier-two and tier-three supports as well. When we look at the whole school math data, again, you can see trends really moving over in a nice direction. Our 17% to 8% in the red. We went from 36% to 59% in the green. So again, we're trending in the right direction for this one particular data point. And again, our, our staff, when they speak, will talk about how we use multiple data points to really make sure that we don't have scores that might be more of an outlier versus what a student is consistently showing in the classroom. When we look at the math by grade level, same criteria here, and we're looking at our third grade, fourth, and fifth being at 85, 80, and just about 75% above the at-risk classification. And again, you know, the trends are going in the right direction. Students are working very hard, and I think, is, do I have another slide or is that it?
No.
Okay. So with that being said, as I kind of previewed, I'd like to introduce a couple of staff members from both buildings. And we use similar processes, but again, primary versus more of the intermediate grades. There are some nuances that are different between our buildings and how we approach not just the IREDDI data, but the other data points that we have. So we thought it'd be really nice just to kind of hear from those that are doing that work every single week, every single day in a lot of ways with our students. So I will introduce Julie Lambert, our curriculum coordinator at Lincoln Street, and Katie Popino, who teaches fourth grade, to speak a little bit more.
Right, sorry. Before you go on, I didn't know at the right time to interrupt.
No, no.
I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Let me go back.
Well, that's okay. We'll actually, can you go one slide forward?
That's me. This one?
I know, to go back to Maine for a minute.
Oh, yeah.
Main Street. One more back. So, okay, I think what I wasn't sure about, and now I see it in there, it is the same, so it is the same comparison in one grade level, two grade level, three grade levels for Main Street too. But in, in Main Street, when you talk about reading, you can't get three grade levels behind.
That's right.
It's not possible. And some, and for kindergartners, they can't even get one grade level behind.
That's right. They're not going to show, they're, they will show, they can be flagged like an at-risk, but they're, they're not multi-grade levels behind.
Right.
So it is different data than when you look at Lincoln Streets, because that is now pulled in, that they're showing a kindergarten level or a first grade level readability.
Right.
That ours will not include.
Yeah, it's not possible.
Right.
To be in those kind of.
Yes, that's right.
When you're assessing them.
Yeah. So our scores always actually, they look a little shinier, and that's part of why, is because they, they, they're not actually in that level of deficit yet. They're still working within the realm of where we would expect kindergarten, kindergartners and first graders to be.
Right.
By the time they're at second grade, they could show up as having a kindergarten level.
And then if you go all the way back to the last slide, that.
Brian's last or mine?
Yes, I'm sorry, Ryan's last slide.
No, you're fine. Oh, no, there's more. I'm sorry. There you go.
Yeah, so at the bottom, so it looks like you're, the way you interpret that is that that's positive, that there's 74% of our fifth graders meet that are not at risk, or another way of putting it is 25% of them are at risk.
Correct.
Whereas in fourth grade, it's only 20%, and third grade, it's only 15%. But is that, I guess I'm trying to understand what you attribute that to. I mean, is that because of the work we're doing, or is that because of who they are, or is that an impact of COVID and that there was less, I mean, I don't know, but how do you explain why there's that trend or that difference that's there?
I, I think that there's probably not a singular answer to explain, you know, that number of students and, and the data points. I mean, I believe if we, if I reflect back to the fall, we talked a little bit more about the patterns that we were seeing emerge from the students that missed, you know, part of their second grade year with regards to the remote instruction, and how we looked at, you know, some of our younger students in third and fourth grade as maybe being a little bit more impact with their foundational reading skills, whereas some of our students in that fourth, fifth grade level were making that transition from number sense to going a little bit more into like the higher level addition subtraction, or maybe in that transition to multiplication. So those, those trends that we were starting to see, I think, are probably one of the explanations that you could say for why the, the numbers are a little bit skewed as far as like almost trending down a little bit from a percentage standpoint. trending down a little bit from a percentage standpoint, but still making growth as far as fall to, fall to winter.
So one of the things, I'm sorry, I mean, I, I, you guys did a lot of work, so I'm not trying to create additional work, but one of the things that'd be interesting, and maybe this hits on what Heather was saying before, is that, so let's take that fifth grade class, for example.
Sure.
That's at the 25% at risk, where were they last year?
Sure.
Were they 25% at risk when you were evaluating them on the fourth grade level? And was it 25% at risk there? Or is it 35% at risk, or 30, or whatever?
Right.
Are we able to carve down that number a little bit with all of our interventions?
Yeah.
Because I know there's also the need to keep, the standards keep moving up too. It's not static.
Right.
So, you know, it's a little bit of both. So I, I get that concept, but it'd be interesting just to look at that to see if we have that information.
I think we could definitely, going, like even at the end of the year, we could look to see where this plays out. The other thing to know is like, when you're looking, like this is the entire grade. So you're taking students who may be English language learners. You're taking students who may be on IEPs, like there, it's all of the kids in there. And so some of them will show up, I mean, we're trying to close gaps because some of them are what we consider to be at risk.
Right.
But I think it will be more, and some of them are just different cohort to cohort. Like that's just, that's just like that group of kids in that grade level sometimes. They will be different. You'll have kind of like an anomaly in the group. But if we can follow those kids, that is helpful. So at the end of the year, we could look and see where are we? Because this is where we are right now.
Right.
Compared to what, to end of year skills. So even this number's not quite right, right? Like it's where we are right now.
Yeah.
But against end of year skills. So it'd be interesting at our end of year data, when we present that, we can make sure that we kind of point out that difference of, did those numbers change or not?
And that group isn't 100% static because new people can come into the district or leave.
Yes.
So there always could be some changes.
Yeah.
So I, I understand that part of it, but.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be interesting to see.
I mean, I think one of the other things, if, when you do a year-by-year comparison or if you even track, like, it would be interesting over time to see, are you starting, obviously third grade is at the highest percentile there, right? Is that a trend over time that you're starting to see, you know, like?
Right.
There's the anomaly of the class.
Yeah.
Or the makeup of a class. But it would be interesting over time, I mean, you have, it sounds like you have ability to slice and tape the data. We don't necessarily have to see it at all, in all its dimensions. But I think that would also obviously elicit some feedback on like when the interventions happen or, you know, if.
There are also.
If we're seeing a dip at the end of the Lincoln Street years, that's interesting.
Yeah. There also is sometimes an introduction of a new skill at a grade level. And so then that's the first time that kids have ever seen it.
Right.
And so then that can impact it, right? Because sometimes they grow in grade level bands. And so kids in third grade may have had three years of cycling on a skill. And so now they're, they're showing like a lot of proficiency. And then a new skill will come in that is brand new to everyone, and then that can look a little bit different. So that, that's interesting, like when we're looking at data, those are some of the things that we talk about to see if there was something that impacted the scores that way.
Right. And, and then another piece, just to kind of wrap this up, is, is the importance of just looking at multiple points of data, right? I mean, when we, by the time we, and this is hopefully, I'm, I'm not trying to throw any shade on our end-of-year iReady data, but that comes after NHSS assessments for Lincoln Street School students. We had NAP assessments. We, we, students are, there's, there's some real truth to the fatigue as we get to like mid-May, end of May. And, you know, we certainly want our students to show their best foot, but we are asking a lot of them. So having those multiple data points in the classroom at the tier one level and tier two and tier three levels are really valuable too, because sometimes you do get a few more of the outliers towards the end of the year because students, you know, that perseverance, that, that endurance is, is being challenged quite a bit.
Ryan, I'm just trying to recall how long the intervention program has been in effect. And so how long those tier two, tier three interventionists have had an impact on the students? Have grade five had interventions since kindergarten? Or were they, I'm trying to think back, where were they?
Well, this is, I mean, we've had, this is our, I guess, I'm thinking of my son in second grade. He's had, he's been in a traditional school model all the way through. I think our students in fourth and fifth grade would have seen more disruptions.
But that, I, I didn't, didn't explain it correctly. I guess the, the tier level one, level two.
The full intervention, yes, program is still being built, but it's much stronger over the past two years than it has been because I think our teachers are much more adept at understanding how to use the data. And that's a credit to Tanya and Ryan and the PLC experience, how to run and work with those PLCs, those educators, how to look at data and use it and inform their instruction. I think that's why you're seeing some of those results.
Sure, sure.
So now, now I will introduce, and, and thank you for the questions. They really are really good questions and some things that, that we can go back and look at. But I will turn it over to Julie and Katie to speak a little bit more about the LSS experience and using the data.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us, and we're happy to talk about how we use data at school.
Y'all aren't projecting them, right? I mean, do you guys want to come back around?
Yeah.
Turn this off? Don't have to be twisting. I don't know.
The button next to me.
Y'all move the button. Stand, stand. I don't know. He doesn't like what I'm doing.
No, no saying yes.
So one of the ways, obviously, that we use data is what you just experienced, which is giving a very high-level look. We do this same presentation with the entire staff in a staff meeting, just to share trends and, and the high-level look. We also, as you probably know, send home iReady data to families twice a year. We send home in January after the mid-year and again in June at the end, at the end of the year with end-of-the-year data. We also send home SaaS results at the end of June, the end of the school year in June. So the second way that we use data that you wouldn't necessarily see in a meeting like this is there is a group of us that start digging in to the student level. And so we're looking at individual students who flag to us for one reason or another on that mid-year assessment. And it could be that they were receiving tier-two interventions and they've really hit their stride and they're making a ton of progress. We're not going to discharge them from tier-two interventions without triangulating the data and talking to the classroom teacher. Deanna holds meetings with classroom teachers to talk about that sort of thing with the interventionists. They'll look at the Akadians, they'll look at classroom performance, all of those things. So we start to dig in, starting with the iReady data, and then we triangulate it different ways. There also might be a student who flags to us because they're not receiving intervention services and their mid-year score dropped. And so we start to ask the question of, why is that? And obviously, the classroom teacher is a big part of that conversation. Again, Deanna has one-to-one meetings with all of the teachers who have students that have flagged to us for one reason or another. Let's see. So those were the two ways I want to talk to you about big picture. And now I'd like Katie to share how we use the data in our weekly CTTs. Every grade level meets once a week in CTT, and we do a ton of work there with data, so.
Julie, what's CTT sample?
I'm sorry. Our CTTs are collaborative team times, sometimes called PLCs in other buildings, but they're called CTTs here. And so every grade level meets for about 50 minutes at the start of a school day with a little bit of coverage for that, like first 15-minute overlap of when students are, are in the building. And that's where MathWin is planned and data is looked at pretty intently.
Ryan was reminding me I have limited time. No, I'm just kidding. I could talk about this all day long. He was not, he was not. No, but it's something that's exciting for us. You know, we've worked hard as our grade level teachers, and it's nice that we have the time that's valued once a week where we have coverage in the classroom. We have an agenda that we stick to. We have group norms. And it's a nice time to be able to talk about the kids, you know? And passing in the hallway, we're always saying, oh, have you done this quiz yet? Have you done that? Nicole Bordeaux and Casey Lowes have done a nice job of making norms too for the quizzes that we're all assessing the students the same way. And we've actually been going back, one of the things with iReady is you can actually edit the quizzes. So we're making them more user-friendly, less multiple choice, but more where they have to apply the discourse that we're using in the classroom and explaining their thinking. Also, we use the data that you saw. We have so many different ways that we can dig into it to further, if we have a question about one particular skill. And kind of like what you were alluding to, Patrick, is the fact that, like, some of my fourth graders, when we took it at the very beginning of January, I think it was the week after Christmas or in holiday break, and they were getting algebra questions because they had done so well in January. Or you have kids that could barely add and subtract in September that are now getting division, but they've never even seen the division symbol. So come June, it's like a celebration because they now know what a fraction is. They can even multiply fractions, they can divide, and they can multiply with confidence. And you don't sit them sitting there struggling, but they're using their whiteboards and using strategies. And I think that's what makes it valuable, data too, is you know that they're not just guessing at multiple choice. And it also evens the playing field because the iReady math and reading, well, not reading, but math can be read to them. So if they're poor in reading, they can click on the speaker. The only one that doesn't allow it is the comprehension check. And that's something that we've been working with the company to try to promote because how can you assess them in these lengthy questions, you know, because they can do the math, but they may not understand the reading portion of it too. So at our CTT meetings, we talk about what Julie said. We look at the Akadians. So the Akadians is given to them maybe four, six times a year, what if you're just three?
Kids in tier two take it more frequently, but.
Okay.
All students do three times.
And so they have 10 minutes to do basic fact fluency on one side. It's a mixture of addition, subtraction, fractions, multiplication, and division. And then they flip it over again. So that's one piece where we're looking for their basic fluency skills to grow. iReady does a nice job this year where not only can they go on and access MyPath that is recalibrated once they take a diagnostic, but the fluency path is working in all three grade levels, and I'm sure at Main Street too, on their basic skills to continue that. And then what do we do when we have all this data? We have a huge spreadsheet where we have all the students, and like in fourth grade, there's eight teachers this year. So we have a Team A and Team B, and we have them grouped, you know, where they meet the needs according to the Akadians, according to their iReady data, what we see in the classroom. And we get together and we talk about, okay, what's our next skill going to be? So for example, this last win, we hadn't done fractions yet, but we were supposed to start fractions, but we weren't in division. So we worked together as a team and we decided, first two weeks, we're still going to do division, the final four weeks, we'll do fractions, and then we'll come back together to discuss what our next goal is going to be. And when we're grouping kids for win, our grade where we have four, Zoe, Polly, Cronopola State students, as well as special educators, and we're all involved in that CTT team meeting. So special ed is aware of what regular ed is doing. Zoe, who's supporting all the grade levels with their math, is also an active member of that. So we're not just putting the kids and their data points on paper, but we're talking about the kids. What do they need? We know that kids who are in extended learning groups, their groups can be a little bit bigger, as well as kind of that higher average group, whereas our lower-tiered kids, they need smaller groups so that they can have that discussion, ask questions, reteach lessons and things like that. And then, again, it just promotes the discourse. Just yesterday, we, I filmed a few kids for what we presented today, and I said, okay, I need four members to come up and help me sort these fractions. And it was kids from all different win groups because their confidence is building. It's no longer, oh, they're high, they're low. It just makes me so happy. And the same is true with ELA too. So was there anything I missed?
I don't think so.
No. I actually, can I just say?
Yeah, go ahead.
So this sort of speaks to, I think, what Heather, you were asking, and Patrick, you were asking. Our win groups, where we differentiate based on where they're currently performing, it's a really nice opportunity for those students that are already in the dark green to come together and really get pushed. So when Katie talks about fourth grade having a focus on fractions, that, you know, what one win group is working on might be just conceptually understanding what a fraction is and manipulating fraction pieces. And then what, what maybe the highest win group is working on is, could, they are dipping their toes sometimes into algebra-type problems, but they're working with fractions at a very high level. We use a program called Exemplars, which presents DOK3 and DOK4 problems, and you can access those at any grade level and even within a grade level, extension opportunities. So that's what we're really targeting in our, our win groups using the data.
And we're doing more of like the inquiry project phase, so it's not, here's a worksheet, bring it home to your parents that we worked on the skill. So, for example, the group I have, we've been working for two weeks on a project so that they're valued, they're invested, they're talking at a higher level. Our CTT meeting also, our fourth grade team, I can speak specifically, has a collaborative document. So we have all the different resources for win that you might want to use, and then ones that are only for classroom. So they're not seeing, oh, we already did that in our classroom, and that, both teams, since there's eight of us, are working together to add resources so that we're not all scrounging for different things. And that's been very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's just, I was sitting here thinking about how many acronyms we use, like interchangeably all the time. So I was like, maybe if you're confused. So we say win, it stands for what I need. And so it is the whole grade level or CTT, the collaborative teams. So like the whole school is a professional learning community, but because we have such large teams, we split them up into smaller ones, and those are just like their collaborative team. So sometimes we come together all to talk about the learning that's happening. And then when they're doing them like in segments or smaller teams, we call those collaborative teams. And, and so during an entire collaborative team, they have one block where they could all shuffle and share kids, and that's win. And so it could say, like, you're going to take all of the kids who are working on this skill, I'm going to take all the kids that are working on this skill. Kids get up, they move, they switch rooms, they go to the different places they need, related services can help then, it's whatever kids need at that time. And so we have, have both of our schools win, win times for math and for reading. And so it's kind of cool to hear them because we actually have a lot of very similar systems. It's nice to hear, like, there's alignment when we get an opportunity to hear from one another, talk about it. But we have the same kind of setup right now. We invited Carla and then Chrissy Redman, which is her first year with us. She's going to talk more about the teacher and her CTT and what they've been doing as well. Want to go, Carla?
Come on. Oh, I'm going to steal my computer so I can take notes. All right. I'm a little taller, maybe, am I? Am I taller? Can you hear me? Okay, there we go. So, actually, I think they covered it, so we can, no, just kidding. I'll just, so there are very similar systems in place. So a lot of what was shared from Julie, from the school-wide perspective, also true at Main Street. Clarification, like that first pass, one thing that does happen for us is we have a curriculum leadership team at Main Street, which is administrators, myself, Emily Darby. So we'll look at all the data when it comes in from various data points and do a first[1657.13] pass of sort of what we see, what we notice, and make some initial recommendations for groupings of students that we want to discuss further with each of those CTTs. At Main Street, our CTTs are half a grade level at a time. So we have half a first grade, half of the second grade, half a K at a time. And then they give input based on all of that other formal and informal data that they have. So there may be some things that, just looking at the iReady data, it paints one picture, but when they add extra input from their perspective, we might move kids in and out of different groups, put them on more of a monitor status. Adding Akadients this year has given us another tool to do that in a more consistent way so that we can do those every couple of week checks for students and be consistent among peers as to how we're monitoring those students. It's been good. One, a couple of things that came up. One of them this year, the implications of data from my perspective is to look at professional development needs. What is the data telling us about our resources or any areas that maybe we need to work on? Consistently looking at that data over time. Are there particular areas that keep showing up that we could use some work on and how, what does that look like? So conversations with teachers or these strategies that you would like more on? We've had the, the benefit of having both Maria and Nice and this year, a coach from iReady. So we have both a math and a reading sort of expert to tap into, to really be able to look at that data and have i, or our curriculum leadership has had conversations with them about this is showing up in our data. What could we do for training purposes or coaching sessions that would help work on this? Elizabeth from iReady did some work with our teachers at a recent staff meeting around growth data. So to your point, looking at whether or not all of our students, regardless of where they started, are they all making growth? Because all of our students should be progressing from where they are. So those were good. Our, our teachers are ready and, and really hungry for understanding that data further and what to do with it. So that's been, that's been another way we use it. Otherwise, most of this was mentioned. We do present this with the learning team, use a data protocol to see if we want to look at goals for the following year for any kind of action planning we might have. I continue to support teachers being able to articulate what those reports are to parents. So we have those conversations. And then a sort of a look forward for us that we've been talking about in curriculum leadership is how can we better incorporate looking at students and all of their different identities and how, what does that look like, using that lens when we look at our data? Are we noticing anything there that we might be overlooking? So that's a new piece, bringing that information out of Alma and really being able to merge that with our data to see if there's work there that we need to consider or do moving forward. So yes, I'll invite my colleague, brand new to us this year, Brave Soul, Chrissy Redman.
Beth is going to hand out a paper that I just threw together. I think that everyone did a great job speaking to what we've been working on in CTTs. I was going to kind of just dig a little bit deeper into what our first grade CTT has specifically been doing. So we've been using the iReady comprehension checks in order to do a walk to math. So as it was kind of mentioned before, it's a time when there's kiddos can go to win, the what I need interventions. And we've been specifically looking at Thursdays and Fridays where our other kiddos are going to their STEAM extension. So what we're left with is this group of kind of middle of the road kids, which sounds like they could be bucketed very similarly, but they're still like quite a range. So we've been using that CTT time to kind of collaborate and see what, how we can best meet their needs. We've been looking at the priority standards. We've been looking at the unit assessments being given, just the generalization of the diagnostic results. And we've been assigning these comprehension checks. So recently, we've given the true false equations, which is kind of given there, a little snapshot into how some of my kiddos did. We look, after assigning it, we look at how they did as a whole class and as a whole part of our grade. We look to see if there's anything that maybe we need to reteach. And after that, we kind of dig deeper. The comprehension checks let you toggle into each student and you can see exactly what they put for that answer. iReady will even populate possible misconceptions for those, for those questions. And then we're able to kind of bucket, bucket them specifically on that need. So again, the example in front of you is the true false equations. So if kiddos got 80 or above, that means they got four out of five questions or five out of five questions. We're like, they got it. Like they, they can grasp that concept. They might have made one error, but in general, they have it. So if they have 60 or below, clearly there's something they're not quite getting. And then we're bucketing them into just like an intervention group, not an intervention group, but a, a group where they can have their needs met. And we're walking them to math so they get to go to another, potentially another teacher on the team to get a really targeted instruction group. The kiddos love it. They, they've been able to see other teachers on the team. They're able to kind of collaborate with other, other first graders that they might not see in their, in their own classroom. And they're getting just a deeper targeted instruction during that time. So those are just examples of what it looks like. At the back, there's just a question, what it looks like to them. For ours, I don't know if it's just first grade, ours does read it to them for the math. So we're kind of lucky in that way. And yeah, it's cyclical. We're on our second cycle right now. And at the end, the iReady gives you the comprehension check B. So you can give them the same, almost the same thing, like very similar questions to see how they've grown. And then we'll do the same thing. We'll look at that data, switch groups as we need. And yeah, does anyone have questions about that? It's kind of new. We've been working through it. Logistically, just from cycle one to this cycle, we've, I think, done a better job. We've done like a deeper dive into it. It's great for collaborating right now. There's going to be, I think, two true false groups, two teachers doing that. One's going to be doing solving word problems to 20. I can't remember what the third group is, but, so they're kind of just rotating based on those priority standards. And it's hitting those middle of the road kids, so those light green or yellow kiddos to kind of scooch them up because they don't need like a deep, deep intervention. They just need that little push in that area.
This is not a question just for you.
Sure.
Beth, so this is tremendous. I love data.
Yeah.
I'm like, you know, I could talk about data all the time. But then I'm also thinking, and the other part of my brain is just thinking about the mental health of our students. And like, I just don't have a sense like of what their experience of this is, right? Like, are we celebrating, like how are we celebrating their small and big win? Like I just, I am like, I grew up testing for it, right? So I imagine like when I look at this, I'm like, oh my God. I would all, I was such a perfectionist, like I would have anxiety all the time if I knew I was being assessed at this level all the time.
Yeah.
So I'm just curious, like it's really not, and you're standing.
Yeah. For this, for this one specifically.
How we're balancing like this desire for data, which is so intentional and obviously so incredibly useful in terms of meeting students where they're at and where, where they need, with the reality of students, you know, increasingly, you know, struggling with mental health and anxiety and just how that works from a student.
I can answer for this and then Carla can kind of go deeper. On that first snapshot, you can kind of see, I think it's the third column. It shows the amount of time it took them to take that entire test. It's only five questions and you can see most of it's two minutes, three minutes. And it just shows up like an assigned lesson would just, or like their path would when they sign into iReady. So I would hope that it's not really stress inducing because it comes up as it's just another lesson. It's just a, a quick check in. It's only five, five questions. And I think at this point, our kiddos are kind of used to it and it's not outside their norm. They're getting their iReady minutes in. And for this one specifically, it's only two, three minutes of their day. So just for this comprehension check, I would say hopefully that's not crazy, crazy for them, but.
Yeah. And it's, it's similar too. I wish ours read to us because I feel like that puts it at such a disadvantage for so many students.
I know.
So a lot of what we're doing, like, so the iReady program, they recommend anywhere from 30 to 45 minutes a day, or not a day, a week on their diagnostic, MyPath, because that's really targeted to their weaknesses, the, the September and January score show. So after they took it in January, it recalibrated so that it's now that targeted instruction. Lincoln Street, it sounds like it's just a little bit different with our win where it's only geared toward math. And it's Monday through Friday. So fourth grade has the lovely time of 2:05 to 2:35, right before the end of the day when they come back from recess and they're like, how much time do we have? And that's really where, like we were talking before, how we want it to be the hands-on, how we want them, you know, to be creating things, making things, applying what they're learning, and just making it fun and engaging. Because we talk about, you know, how do you use this in real life? And we can say that all we want to, and it's like a try it. And it's like, how many tamale's are there if we have this many people? But it's that actual engagement and the discourse. There's quite a few of us here who do the center-based learning model. So you meet as a group for 10 minutes, 10 minutes as a whole class. And then we separate into three or four groups that rotate around. So they have meet with the teacher where they're getting targeted and instruction with me at their level. And again, based upon their assessments, based upon what we're seeing, those are fluid groups. They're not just targeted into one group because iReady says it. There's so many different data points there. And then we do at my seat, which is usually where everyday math used to be the spiraling math program. We don't have that with ReadyMath. So that's where just last week, my kids were back working on multi-digit subtraction and multiplication and division to make sure that those skills that they saw over the last few weeks, months, that they're maintaining those skills. And then T stands for technology and H is hands-on learning. So where they don't want our kids just wrote, memorizing facts anymore, it's playing games with peers. And again, if they're not meeting with me, then they can be working with different level peers so that they're building, so that weaker kids are building their math discourse. Kids who are a little bit stronger in math are actually using the vocabulary and having to explain it out loud to a peer. So just in general, that, you know, consistent win. And ours goes for six weeks on and then two weeks off. So we're finishing our third round of win right now. We started the second week of September, I believe it was. So again, we'll revisit, we'll give just a few more assessments there. I promise you, they're not sitting there every day doing the assessment. And again, it's almost like they can't tell the difference between the MyPath and the diagnostic because it's the same program. So they're used to the format. Again, they can work at their own pace and it really doesn't take that much classroom time away. But the information that provides in the Akadients and others is so valuable. And it lets us, you know, target in our small group too, as long as, as well as ELA, like I mentioned before, just to give the kids really what specifically they need that we want them to leave going to fifth grade. And the only other thing I wanted to mention when we were talking about the interventions, this is our second full year doing that same win model where all students are getting math intervention at their level for that half hour. That's on top of our, one hour long math too. So that kind of looking at the data to think about too, that has to do with the win model last year, this year's data. Whereas before that, the kids that would leave for intervention were leaving during our math block. So they were missing direct instruction with us to go work with our reading specialists that were also math interventionists. So if those reading interventionists aren't meeting with groups at that time, then they're pushing into our math intervention too for even more support. So.
From the systems, I think we're, we're talking about that a lot of just like, what assessments are we giving? Is it giving us the information that we want? And are we maximizing instructional time? Like collecting the data is important. And I think when we use the, the term assessment, that can look like a lot of different things. It doesn't mean like you're sitting down with a pen and paper test because it could be a teacher just like quickly taking notes on something and they observe. And so we're using assessments to cover like all of those things when we're, when we're looking at data collection. But we are reviewing our current systems and talking about like, is this the actual information that is the most useful and maximizes our instructional time? So we were just having a conversation about that. We're going to be doing a review. But if kids are like really having a difficult time, they can, you know, we make accommodations. They can test in different environments. Like we watch for all of those types of things. It, that doesn't really seem, the fatigue comes like in our longer stuff, like those big benchmarks where kids start to wear out on them. The quick like formative daily checks are pretty fast and kids are used to them.
Yeah, it sounds like you've done a really nice job. In my experience, it's a little bit well-integrated.
Yeah.
They don't really see it, as you mentioned.
Yeah.
Because this is on a day-to-day basis.
Thank you very much. Moving on to committee reports. Is there any update on DEIJ?
We rescheduled. So we have no.
Okay. Got rescheduled. Okay. I think there are no policies this month, correct?
Right.
So no meeting. Superintendent Evaluation Committee meets again this week. So Heather will be there. Wellness.
That also was moved up to this Thursday.
Okay.
I'm not going to be here this Thursday. You're no longer here either. So, anyone? Tonya, are you at the wellness?
I think I'm double booked.
You are too? Yeah. It got changed. It was last.
I think one of my P teachers is going, so I could always ask.
Oh, perfect.
So we can get an update.
I have the, you know, I have the information from it, but I.
What is it? Hmm, I think it might be five o'clock.
I have it at home, Pat, if I can. I don't think it's the morning. They, she alternates between morning and.
It's okay. It's five o'clock. There's a steam night, I think, that night also.
Oh. Okay. Then the Safety Committee, the task force met recently.
And a couple takeaways that I have, Esther, you can elaborate on it, but the goal is, per Rich Kane, that every classroom should have a radio. He does a great job trying to get grants and get the expense down or pay for it. I would really like this board to consider using end-of-year funds to get a radio in nearly all of our classrooms as possible.
How many classrooms are?
I, I don't have those numbers. I intended to ask Rich.
We have, we, we just put in an order for 20, I say just, a few months ago. It's, we're just waiting for them to come in. At Main Street, every classroom will have a radio.
Excellent.
Once those come in.
Oh, good. Okay. And Lincoln Street?
We would have a higher need. I'd have to give you the numbers on that. But right now, there's, I believe, one radio at each grade level.
Okay.
So that when they go outside for like a morning recess or, you know, somebody always has a radio if they're not in the classroom.
Yeah.
But we're not at a one-to-one as far as classrooms. We have 25 classrooms right now. We're just looking at regular classrooms.
Okay. Just something to consider. Obviously, security is a top of my list as I exit the board, but I feel as though that is universally useful today. So the other thing, which today I voted in support of a new police station, but I will tell you that it brings me a lot of anxiety to think about the police station now being on the other side of the train tracks. And so we're not within a 30-second timeframe. And the only access you can get if you're not on this side of town is going over that one-way bridge. And the representative at the meeting for Exeter Police Department was Devin West. And, you know, I asked him again, you know, what will you do? And he's like, we will go over that bridge. You know, we, we have permission to do that. And he goes, most likely, all of us won't be on one side of the tracks. And the other argument is they're closer to the high school. But that doesn't make me feel better about this campus. So those are just things I have to leave you with to always ask the questions, whoever's on that committee. I just don't think there's ever quite enough security. But I do feel very confident in the way we are handling things and pursuing things. You know, I know Esther's been doing this well before I came on board. And I just, you know, it keeps getting better. There's a lot of effort that goes into securing six towns and getting everyone on the same page. So that was, that's been a pleasure to be on that committee. And whoever, you know, is going to attend moving forward, I think you'll feel the same way. Anything else that you took away from that meeting?
Nope. You did a good job.
Yeah. I think that's good. Sabbatical, we don't have anything going on there. And the Professional Growth Fund.
We met and reviewed the requests and a good majority of the requests were grade levels for new programs and for summer, summer opportunity to work as a grade level and to really get it, an understanding of the new programs that they're presenting. I'm trying to think.
The new reading.
Yeah, the new reading.
That was a lot of it was focused on that, not exclusively. That was a lot of requests.
But all the requests were granted and all moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have no new business policies under there, but we don't have any policies?
I'd just like to, one new business is to just thank you, Patty, for your service on the board.
Thank you.
But I just, just hearing you speak about your work on the Safety and Security Task Force, I know you've been a tremendous leader in that regard and as a board leader and you know, as part of the company. So thank you.
Six years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful to work with. It's wonderful.
Patty, I know you came in campaigning for safety for schools. And I recall that, I was retired at that point, but I recall that was a big focus of yours. And you go out with that wonderful focus still. So thank you for your time.
I appreciate it.
For all the students and staff and our schools.
I feel a little uncomfortable when people say, thank you for your service. I, I, I would say the same thing, but the biggest thing that I've learned is thank you guys. I mean, the work that our public schools shoulder on behalf of our community and our children has been, it's nothing short of a miracle. I mean, I just, I grew a lot in these six years and I've learned a great deal. And although I'm very still focused on security, um, I, I'm going out with so much more of an open mind and understanding of how things work. And I, I wish everyone in the community could, that have school-aged kids, and even if they don't, I wish that they could see things through this lens that I have.
Patty, I, I'm gonna add to the list. I, I'm not gonna thank you for your service because clearly you're in this role for the money. But I, you know, it's funny that a lot of people highlighted the safety part and I think you're most vocal about that, but, you know, I've, I've had the pleasure of being with you for these past six years in this board. And, um, you know, I see, one of the things that's, that I really appreciate about you isn't just the areas that you came into, you know, being fairly knowledgeable about, like safety and, and continue to advocate for, but other areas maybe you hadn't explored as much, like DEIJ, for example. I don't think that was an area that, um, I mean, as a school district, we're becoming more fluent with that. But you really just sort of got into it and mixed it up and tried to figure it out. And, um, and I think you, uh, became a lot more fluent in that area. So, you know, I really appreciated about, that about you, about your willingness to be uncomfortable and challenge yourself because I think that's benefited the entire board and the community as a result. So thank you for doing that.
Again, thank you. Okay, moving on. We have faces to be. Okay, I think that might be it. Okay, no, no non-public adjournment.